Yeah, twenty-four.
There's two more that I'm sitting that I need. A couple things.
I don't know if you're in one.
There's not one that I thought. For a while.
You think? It seems like. Yeah, Carson's okay.
Well, he hasn't yet.
What do you think? I mean, I like him. The same.
We have nine o'clock. Rides. Flight of Louisiana. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning, everybody. Need a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
There may be one amendment. North Northeast Iowa State Development merger isn't going into effect anymore. So we can talk about it or not talk about it?
We can.
Is that on the, is that the same thing as what's on the bottom of the agenda? It shares a, okay, that's the last item.
Yeah.
It's a discuss. Yeah. But do we need to add something else?
To remove it. I guess.
Oh, okay.
Since it's not gonna happen anymore.
Okay.
Do you want to talk about it or?
At this point, it's just all of the years.
They present those. Yeah.
Yeah, there is another change, too. We're to meet with Roger Allen regarding the Veterans Memorial, but he has had a town of state project. So he's gonna contact us and get on the agenda at a later date. So they both will go.
I'll make, I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
All right. Approved the amounts of the August fourth, twenty twenty-five regular meeting.
I'm there.
Second.
On favors?
Hi.
Through employee claims filed county auditor for one thousand two hundred forty-nine dollars eighty-seven cents.
I'm like. I like the motion.
Okay.
All in favor?
Hi.
All right. Through claims filed county auditor for five hundred and seventy-six thousand eight hundred thirteen dollars and fifty-two cents.
Second.
Favor?
Hi.
Through the monthly report to their quarters office.
Oh, yeah. Thirteen thousand seven forty-seven something.
Michelle's just sitting here smiling.
Thirteen thousand seven hundred forty-seven dollars and thirty-four cents.
Did you want to go over that a little bit, Michelle?
You guys have any questions? It's, you know, just our share from vitals, T and R, recording revenue, passport pictures. Just if you see somewhere on the record you got a question, we should be an email or something.
Lot of things at the behalf of the state.
They get a lot of the money.
Like the motion that we accept the monthly report from the reporters' office?
Second.
Hi.
All right, thank you. Okay, next items in discussion, place on file, filing the newer management plan. Single Barnside, Byron Township, section ten. Need a motion to put down a bottom.
I make a motion to set those aside, put them on file.
Uh, second.
Favor?
Hi.
All right. Uh, discuss the snow removal contract. Is there? Chris, explain that.
G and L, Law Rangers reached out to me, I believe it was Monday afternoon. Uh, they're the company that's been doing our snow removal. There is a provision in our contract that states that the parties may renew this agreement on the same or other such terms as may be agreeable to the parties. Within that email, he stated that they are willing to renew at the same cost as what it was last year. So that's why I'm presenting it to you folks to see if you would like to renew it. If not, it will have to be placed out for bid.
What is the cost of placing it up for bid?
Uh, they are removing snow at the courthouse in the jail area, human services, public health, uh, the senior center building. I need to fix that wording. And the ELC. And it's three thousand seven hundred dollars a month for one, two, three, four, five months.
And they're talking about the cost of publications or?
I was talking about cost of publications to put it out there for bid and what, and does this put them at a disadvantage?
I would say yes, it would put you at a disadvantage because they can come in and raise it to four thousand.
But if, I mean, does it put it, if we put it up for bid, that it, this now puts them, G and L, at a disadvantage. Potentially, because somebody could come in and bid less.
And I'm gonna say cost of publication will probably be a hundred bucks because we run it for two weeks. And then we'd have to set a date for bidding.
I will say, in my experience over the last forty-some years, trying to find a reliable contractor to do snow removal that is there to gets it done when you want it done versus on their time schedule is really tough. And G and L has been very, very cooperative about trying to get our parking lot cleared before employees arrived and patrons arrive. I used them in a prior business that I had and always had very good satisfactory work with them. And I don't know. The sheriff probably sees.
I was gonna say. More about it. They, they do a very good in years past. Um, it seems like some days there's not enough salt you can put down, but um, they get out there early and they, they come through, hit it, you know? Um, even in between when there, there is stuff in, in the parking lot. So as far as I'm concerned, they do a very good job keeping our area clean down there.
And there aren't as many properties as we remove snow from. If somebody, you need to hire somebody that's big enough and has enough equipment and staff that they can get. You have a real, I can go or you have, that's not very proper. Yeah. Got to bid somebody where the.
Looks like the last time you guys put it out for bid was October of twenty twenty-three. And it was G and L Law Rangers and Hendersons. And at that time, um, the board approved the lower bid with G and L Law Rangers.
Normally, I'd say put it out for bid, but you can go one more year.
I can make that a motion.
I will.
John, your thoughts? You have them?
Yes.
Second.
All in favor?
Good.
All right.
I will reach out to them and update the contract at the end. Um, John, once I get it updated, you can sign it and then I'll um, have them come in and sign it and put it on file.
Very good. We've got several more minutes before our next uh, for zoning request, which is nine ten. Oh. Most of these might require some discussion. Will be meeting at ten with the contract regarding the repair.
Maybe there's a couple popping comments that take less than three minutes.
Our board committee update.
Sure.
At ten minutes.
Yeah, I can do one. Uh, regional transportation, uh, uh, administration and executive meetings this week are, are not happening. So um, that's due to the PC overlay uh, uh, presentation down at uh, in the Buchanan County under the Kowski diagonal this week.
That got changed. Of course not.
Thank you for that. Um, regardless, we, we had a light uh, agenda items this month, so they're not gonna happen this, this month.
Can you just think up a little bit?
Yes, ma'am.
Things.
Uh, safety meeting is gonna meet this week. Uh, we'll talk about the safety manual and uh, obviously, we always do safety incidents reviews. Something that only get a couple minutes.
Oh, we do a shameless question that we can do that.
Nice.
So, they're actually minutes. Food pantry is in search of toilet paper and other household items at this point in time. Um, we served two hundred and eighty-one households in May and two hundred and fifty-three households in juice. We are, our property level in Buchanan County is right around nine percent and we are serving eight point eight percent of the public. So we're right on. With. All that. They really like donations as far as deodorants, personal items, toilet paper. They're in need of that right now. Anybody that could drop that off and of course, fresh produce is always welcome. About it for that one.
Thank you. Uh, let's see, we got people. Uh, July twenty-fourth, I was at the opioid settlement committee meetings. Well, we updated uh, where some of our programs are. We did set aside seventeen thousand dollars from the opioid fund to go for the two goods for drugs program uh, run through pathways. And for all second graders in Buchanan County schools uh, for the cost of the staff plus fifth and seventh grade curriculum are gonna be added, which will include workbooks and the cost of the staff. That'll all be provided by pathways. Currently, our settlement budget is at a hundred and thirty-four thousand three seventy-four. That becomes fluid as opioid funds come into the county. July twenty-fifth, I met at the Central Island Juvenile Detention. They reviewed several industry things, specifically working on a proposal to amend the compensatory time off policies, new to financial liabilities, and discuss the new and renewed contract services by for I would give them all the attention. And uh, some legal opinions. Uh, just for information, they manage over forty million dollars worth of uh, funds going through the organization through both their juvenile detention activities plus statewide drug testing, transportation services and other managed services for different counties and entities. So it's a, it's a huge organization. And their net worth is at a million, eleven million dollars plus, so it's quite an operation.
When we get time, they, they had some discussion about their voting, which members were allowed to vote in those conversations.
They're. Canings. People I have stood by, Harzen County, one of the original six founding counties of the Juvenile Detention Center that put up some money to start it. And they're challenging the membership of which counties are actually involved in it. Legal law under twenty-eighty. And it's a ongoing legal controversy right now.
Nine ten?
Yeah.
I make a motion to open a public hearing for Richard zoning request?
Yeah. Second.
Okay.
Bye.
All right. Here now. You're.
He's on my list.
Which one? Yes.
Yeah. That's. Wrong line. I guess.
Way too many cables.
Okay, so the first request that we have is from Brooklyn Richards. She was looking to rezone two acres from A one agricultural to A two agricultural to establish a single family dwelling. Uh, the request is located in section twenty-eight of Fairbank Township. We had nine, or sorry, four neighbors that were notified of the request. Um, at the planning and zoning meeting, no one from the neighbor was present for that. Um, CSRs, I have sixteen percent eighty-five CSR, three percent fifty-five CSR, eighty-one percent fifty-one CSR. Um, the majority of the entire parcel is located in the one hundred and five hundred year floodplain. However, in the rezoning request area, which you can see is got the lines on it. Um, there's just very minimal to the south portion of that. So when they do construction for their house, um, they will have to remain out of the flood zone. Um, any construction that does take place in the floodway would have to require a base flood elevation certificate, um, which comes from the DNR. Um, there were forty vehicles per day for this location. And the CSR, um, again, isn't terrible. You've got the fifty-five and fifty-one running through there. And it did not take any agglan out of production. Um, as you can see, there is already a driveway established, um, with Grandma's house already established as well to the east of that. Um, so they will have to have a driveway easement, which was part of the condition during the approval, um, that they will obtain a shared driveway. And I did recommend the request for approval because again, it's taking any egg in that is production. Any questions? Did everybody in the back hear me? I'm sorry. I'll do.
Amber yell. Any questions or comments? You maintain a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Yeah. I get a motion to prove.
You make a motion that we approve this zoning.
Second.
All favor?
Hi.
We'll call them next.
Let's please.
First eye.
Cleveland eye.
Local eye.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Down.
You guys are welcome to leave unless you want to hang around. Um, but I'll just send an email for them. Thank you.
I make a motion to open up the get, get a zoning request.
Second.
All favor?
All right.
So this request, um, is taking two acres from A one agricultural to R one residential, um, again, to establish a single family dwelling. It's located in section fourteen of Perry Township. The one, sorry. CSR is ninety-nine percent fifty-one CSR and one percent twenty-five CSR. Um, this one, again, uh, majority of the parcel is located in the floodplain, um, for the one hundred and five hundred. However, in the rezoning request area, it is not located in the floodplain. Um, so again, no base flood elevation needed for that one. Um, this one, there were two neighbors that were notified of the request. Um, again, no response during the planning and zoning meeting or any phone calls. Um, there are seventy vehicles that pass through along this road per day. And I did recommend the request for approval.
Questions or comments?
Looks like they found, um, ground that was suitable for the building.
Yes. Yes, they did. On a nice road, too.
If there's no more comments, I would entertain the motion to close the public hearing.
Some of them.
Second.
All favor?
Hi.
Any motion to approve?
I would make a motion to approve the rezoning request from A one to R one.
Second.
Both call? First eye.
Cleveland eye.
Local eye.
Thank you.
Feel the pressure.
You start asking more questions.
Okay.
Yeah, but any funny?
Okay, can I get a motion to open the public hearing for Rodney's request?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Public hearing.
So this request is looking at one point six eight acres, um, rezoning out from A one agricultural to R three residential. This is located in Jefferson Township, section thirty. Um, we had four neighbors notified of the rezoning request. We did have one neighbor, um, as you can see from the image to the south, that did attend the planning and zoning meeting. Um, they just had some questions as far as why the location for the establishing of the house basically across from them. Uh, they had concerns about removing the trees that were there. Um, the applicant and owner did state that not all of the trees would be removed just enough for where they're looking to establish their dwelling. CSR, um, there's eighty-eight percent ninety CSR and twelve percent eighty-seven CSR. Uh, this is not located in the floodplain. Um, there are thirty vehicles per day. And I also wanted to point out that the owner and applicant owns more than thirty-five acres and therefore did not need to take the process of going through to rezone. Um, however, they wanted the neighbors to be notified of the request and also for the future. Um, should they ever decide to split the, basically that house from the agglan, then it would already be rezoned properly for that. Um, so that was something that he chose to do as well. And that is all I have on this one. If you guys have any questions? I'm sorry, and the applicant and owners. Doesn't, I, yes, thank you. I'm like, it's on somewhere. If you guys have questions for him as well.
Questions or comments?
Can we hear from you? We can. It's easier. You guys will speak to me the turn of the screen.
Any questions?
So press me, this is all timber.
It is. It's been timber since third. Thank you. I'm done.
Again, any other comments? Not, I'd ask for most people's public hearing.
My motion.
Second.
All in favor?
That's right.
And we need a motion to approve.
I'm a motion to approve.
Since it's always been the timber and you can last.
We'll follow, we'll, uh, first eyes.
Cleveland eye.
Very good. All approved, thank you.
You guys asked my question as well.
Ask questions when she's giving us good information. The layout's a little good. Appreciate that.
Thank you. That's the boundary. And there's probably some of the ones.
We're good. Yes, you're surprised.
You mean? He is the one, the same guy?
Well, yes, I don't.
Down the air, someone had already popped the stones. I was made to compromise.
Six, six, I got nine twenty-five. He uh, wants you to uh, open the public hearing for Levi Ginnon and John Koffner.
Second.
Second. All in favor? Uh, all right. We are now in public hearing.
Thank you. Um, so this request is point six two eight acres being rezoned from A one agricultural to R three residential. Um, so they can establish a religious educational school. This is located in section two of Perry Township. Just that aerial image of what is going to be resowned, just a little triangle piece. Um, it does not take any agglan out of production. There were six neighbors that were notified of the request. Um, again, we had no response, um, phone calls, messages, or it didn't attend the planning and zoning meeting either. Um, we have a hundred percent ninety CSR. So again, that's where that concern comes in, where it is the high CSR. But again, it's not agglan and is not being taken out of production. This is not located in the floodplain. And then I just wanted to kind of touch base on this. So we do have other zoning districts that do allow for schools. Um, however, when we go to R three, it's to allow for the institutions of a religious educational school, which pertains more to their community. Um, so that just kind of keeps it more. Again, just the people within their community can attend, not necessarily, um, us. So that helps them as far as keeping things the way that they intended to. Um, there were a hundred vehicles per day for this request. Um, they are in attendance if you guys have any questions for them. Um, however, the last thing I guess I'll note is that we did put a condition on this request. Um, and the condition states that it's so useful before a religious educational school and will obtain and establish an adequate septic system as well as obtain and establish an adequate driveway. So as far as the driveway, that's something that would be taken up the secondary roads. If that would be permitted, if not, then they would have to use, um, the existing driveway that's there and then come over to that.
Yeah, I don't see a limitation on site. Since Brian's not here, I assume he didn't reach out about any concerns about site distance or anything like that.
Um.
It, it, I don't see it.
Yes. Correct. Correct.
Do we have enough ramp for a septic and a driveway? That's pretty small.
So I do believe the water, correct me if I'm wrong, is gonna be hooked up to, um, the existing house that's there, but as far as a septic system, yes. Um, we generally don't need to size them too large as for a school. They're not, you know, attendance three hundred and sixty-five days a year. So we can kind of minimize the footprint of that septic system.
Currently, uh, you said it's uh, being used for aggr, is it just pasture ground right now or?
Yeah, currently.
Thank you.
Are you okay with the restrictions that are in here? Is, is that gonna be okay? Yes.
Any other? Any other comments or questions? Now I'd ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
All in favor? I need a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
But the conditions provided?
With the conditions provided, of course. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Yeah, I'll second that because staff recommends approval of this one. They just don't like the 90 CSR.
Okay, I need a local third side.
Wheel and die.
We're going.
Congratulations. We're all set. And I've got a couple minutes here.
More questions, boys? No questions? Working out well for me because we kind of skipped up the middle.
I'm just going to make a comment that I really do appreciate the work that Amber and the P&amp;Z do preparing these for us because it really answers all kinds of questions clears things up for us. Makes it it to do a great job.
Format though is consistent. We kind of know which page to flip to. Yeah, I really appreciate it.
Got 9:30.
Alrighty, I need a motion to open the public hearings for one.
Somewhat.
Second.
All in favor? Now, public hearing.
So this is 19.5 acres that is being rezoned from A1 agricultural to A2 agricultural. The purpose of the rezoning is to establish single-family dwelling and sale of a property to an individual. The size of this split is larger than what I can approve as the zoning administrator. So that's the reason why we're bringing this to you guys for approval. This is located in Section 11 of Jefferson Township. We had five neighbors that were notified of the zoning request. We had no phone calls, messages, or anyone in attendance for the P&amp;Z meeting. CSR, we have 3% 90 CSR, 61% 80 CSR, 6% 76 CSR, 29% 74 CSR, and 1% 65 CSR. There is quite a bit of floodplain running through the property. Again, we've got the 500 and 100. The blue is the 100 that runs through there. At this point, there are no structures that enter that floodway. So again, we're good as far as the floodplain on that. There are 100 vehicles that do pass through this and I recommended for approval with the condition that only one single-family dwelling will be established and the land will remain untilable acres unless rezoned in the future. The P&amp;Z had also backed that as far as the condition. However, now the Senate filed 592. We just want to make sure that we're not in violation of anything regarding that. So I did request or asked Josh to attend just to make sure if we need to change that wording to remove only single-family dwelling. You know, that's something that we can look into. Mainly, the reason why we put those conditions on there is because if you get to like an R3 residential that can allow for like mobile home parks, hospitals, private clubs, hotels, motels, that's why we put that stipulation on there. So nothing else in the permitted use can be established. I guess that's just the basis for having that condition on there. But I will take any questions anybody has.
Oh, we're going from A1 to A2 on this one?
That is correct, yes. And the reason to going to A2 is because the minimum is two acres for A2, but A1 agricultural minimum is 35 acres.
Okay. And so the reason why we put the stipulation on was because of R3?
Because, nope, just for the fact that this is a 19-acre parcel and with it being in the location that it's at, right, we not getting down there, not saying that it would happen, but somebody could potentially come in and just establish six homes. And then all of a sudden, it's just like, we've got six homes on good CSR ground that was never approved. So by putting that stipulation on that condition, a little bit more control, I guess, that we would have as the county for that.
It looks like the young gentleman is going to farm it.
He is, yep. So the individual that's going to buy it unfortunately wasn't able to purchase all of the ground at this time and is purchasing what they're available to them, I guess, as far as financial reason. I do believe.
Can we hear your tone?
Yes.
Can we hear your tone? It'd be nice to know what the future plans are with this.
It's going to continue to be farm, just as it is. He's going to be moving into the house and farming as he is, plus he'll be renting the rest of the park.
Congratulations. Nice to see you, young, aspiring young farmer. It's awesome.
Do you have any comments about 592 and if this condition is going to violate anything there?
So 592, and forgive me, I'm getting up to date on all of this myself. Is there, is there a residential building on the property right now?
That is correct, yes.
So under 592, there's the county has to allow a minimum of one accessory dwellings to be built. Whether or not other aspects of the rezoning request comply with everything else is a different question, but just speaking solely about the accessory dwellings. Yeah, 592 is pretty clear.
So an accessory dwelling is not necessarily a house, it's an accessory dwelling?
No, and there's other, there's other limitations, requirements that go into accessory dwellings. They have to be basically half the size of the residential bill of the residential home or smaller. So, right, it's not, it's not the same thing as building a whole size residential.
What are other types of accessory dwelling units?
I'm not really familiar of any other than, I mean.
There's barn, machine shed, another shed, hog house. So there's a lot of, there's quite a few over there built. That's why he was selling the acreage plus 28 acres, more or less altogether. So he's got, he's got the house and the sheds to go with, and there's a couple dens on it. So 11,000 bushel bin and a 2,500 bushel bin, or 5,500 bushel bin.
Yeah, when you say accessory building, was that, is that kind of like a shouts?
What you're going to, a Senate filed 592, which is a new thing just recently came about. Unfortunately, I don't think it really pertains to this plot of land.
Right. An accessory dwelling unit is obviously different than.
Right.
Primary.
A non-dwelling, you know, shed, machine.
So this gets to how many houses would be allowed on the property. It's a, it's a new law that just went into effect that kind of restricts us from allowing how many accessory dwelling units, dwelling being the operating word, or like a house type of conversation. So they're just trying to make sure that we're not trying to restate something that the state law has already described that we're doing it the wrong way.
An accessory dwelling unit would be like a mother-in-law shack. I don't know what you would call it, but something like that, a smaller dwelling or family to live in, something like that. Not, not a, not a machine shed or something.
Like a tiny house or something.
Right.
You could put up a hog barn or something like that if you wanted to.
Yes.
That would be.
And that'd be, that'd be different than what this law is trying to do. So the.
Sorry.
Leslie wants to move in.
If we put this condition on that, that we're restricting one single-family dwelling unit?
We'll, we'll violate 592.
All those questions?
You have what's, what's written there?
Or, oh, you found that.
You have the actual request.
This is what's coming up here.
On single. So I don't think this is a violation just as it's written because it says single-family dwelling and it doesn't address accessory dwellings at all. So I would read this as, this doesn't, it doesn't take a stance on accessory dwelling. Right. So I think that's good.
I, I would assume from that, in the future, if they decide to do that, it probably wouldn't be a problem because of Senate file 592.
Correct. It has to be allowed regardless if I want to see it or not. So, yes.
Just to take the questions off. Any other comments?
Better number of questions for it.
I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Somewhat.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
All right. And I will need a motion to approve.
I would recommend that we approve this with the condition that only one single-family dwelling will be established and the land will remain untilable acres unless rezoned in the future.
Uh, second, yep.
Hey, we'll call vote. Third side?
Wheel and die.
Go on.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Yes.
Welcome to the farm hall. I guess I'm going for the next one.
Okay.
I know if you can push to open the hearings and the jet-winder zoning request.
Second.
All in favor? We're now in public hearing.
This request is 4.82 acres from A1 agricultural to M manufacturing to establish the appropriate zoning to expand on the existing business for Joe's continued growth and the desperate need of more space. This request is located in Section 35 of Fairbank Township. We had four neighbors notified of this request. No one came to the planning and zoning meeting or had any calls or messages to us. And I guess I'll point out too, so the area that says 2.86 is already the existing of which Joe has rezoned previously and is taking up quite a bit of that area already within business. So the L shape for the 5.82 is roughly a little bit more of what we're looking to have for additional space. I know the image is not updated, but the south structure, there's actually another building that was built on Dad's property that also has unfortunately been taken over by the business. Again, they just, there are entirely more space out there. The CSR, we have 73% 94 CSR and 27% 95 CSR. This is not located in the floodplain. There's an average of 690 vehicles per day that run through here. And then I did not recommend the request for approval due to the high CSR, but I also understand the need for his expansion with the continued growth for the community and then the jobs that it will create for them as well. And Joe is in attendance if you guys have any questions as well. We did, sorry, we did not put any conditions on this request.
And it's currently being farmed.
That is correct, yes. We are to the understanding that if this does get approved, Joe will probably wait a few more years and keep it in pasture until he's ready to get that expansion out a little bit further. So it will remain in pasture for now.
How many employees do you currently have?
There's left.
And the additional growth of the building footprint, if that's a thing, would be for both manufacturing and storage or?
Yeah. And the reason we're doing this much, let's say we won't use, they could be five years, still ten years until we use the back section that's intact. But the bottom south side, we'll use that, right? It's good, it has the building on.
I understand there was another property that was potential location for this, but it was on a gravel road and it would separate your business into two different footprints. It sounds like that would be a bit of a couple challenges there. Not only for you, but for us as far as acquiring terrains, gravel road and things like that.
Brian didn't want that.
Any questions?
Funding and zoning recommended approval and then staff did not?
Correct. I did not, just due to the CSRs, but again, it's one of those things. You have to kind of take each, each case differently, I guess. Because this is an established business and it's also creating jobs within their community, which is always great to see.
In highway construction and pipeline construction, we have this, this process where we remove the topsoil and place it somewhere else where it could be used. Do you have plans for something like this? I mean, it's, it's been a good high CSR.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's kind of dropping this on you. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
No, typically don't physically put the soil to save it for later. So you're asking.
Do you have, you have a property in that area that you could potentially move it to?
Yes, there is one. Do we need a topsoil?
Yes, sir.
Not to change the subject or anything, but as far as P&amp;Z members, I had seven that voted in favor and one that was in opposition for the vote. So it did pass seven to one, yes.
Just from an economic development standpoint, that's where you get into this balance between ag and economic development. And we have tried to be really supportive of the Amish community and their growth that they've had in their industries and everything up there. It means a lot to Bican County, I think. And it's, it's encouraging to see this type of development happen for the county. And being this is on high-traffic hard-service road, I think it makes a lot of sense. And with the understanding that that ag land is not going to be taken for production immediately, it could be years down the road. It's, it's all dependent on business climate and that type of thing. And if those things wave, I would be supportive. Interested in your comments.
Yeah, I'm worried about all the turning traffic on the gravel road and fair enough to gravel. It sounds like that, that the trucks would tear them off, but it sounds like there's going to be a lot of truck traffic that this generates. So that's a good thing for us. My only concern is, is the topsoil. So guys have been here three generations. You've been real good stewards of our, of our community. So I guess I'm not terribly worried about that.
I don't like this. I don't like the high CSR that it is. And you really, you don't have the need for it right now. You're asking for something that's five years down the road or three years down the road.
Yes.
So I mean, I guess I don't understand why it's placed before, set this point in time. And I know that in, in the past, we have asked, we ask other businesses to move on to gravel roads and to move off of, you know, to find more suitable CSR.
In defense of that, I would say I appreciate them coming to us now versus four years from now in an urgent situation that we have to make a shotgun decision on something. And it's encouraging to see that they have growth plans down the road. So that's just my opinion. Anyone else have comments? Public? Wendy, you are on the P&amp;Z committee.
I guess it does not, I see a sign that was a huge.
It does not, I see a song. That was a huge, um, office had, had read, um, had done their research as well. Um, but currently and I approve and I appreciate the, um, the non, uh, it being several years out. But it gives them opportunity to make plans and not have to be specific where they're going and come back each time. Well, the ground that we're discussing is in pasture. Um, I believe it's not actual crime reduction ground, pasture ground. And, um, the Amish community is always very diligent about their, their use of pasture. There. So, um, the discussion went long though on this one.
Thank you. Brad.
Bradley, the A to one sign, um, being a farmer, uh, down the area, the riding houses. What we normally do as farmers is we'll purchase a piece of property and if there's trees there, you have to CSR, we'll remove the trees and make it in agricultural land. Just because there's trees there, it doesn't mean that it can't be put into production. Same way with this deal here. You've got ninety plus CSR. We've all said they don't make any more of that. And now we're saying, oh, it's okay to build on the tree site. Even though the trees could be removed and it be put in production, same thing here is pasture now, it could be put into problem. And I see the other side of it too. I'm all for the Amish being able to continue on. So there are two sides to this, but I go back to with turbines. We weren't able to build on CSR of this magnitude, but it's okay if other people do. That's my beef.
Thank you. Any other comments? That I would take the motion to close the public hearing?
I like the motion.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Hi.
I would make a motion to follow staff's, um, recommended recommendation, which would be to not approve this to the CSR.
Second.
Are you saying to follow P and C's, my recommendations are
the staff's recommendation, which do not approve it?
I'll make a different motion to, uh, approve the, uh, zoning request.
I'm assuming that this died for lack of saying, which it sure did not say yet.
Yes. And I would second that. We'll call the third side.
Wheel and I.
Google name.
It's approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Best wishes. Okay. All right. Next down the agenda. Just hiring freeze successful secondary road from sheriff's office. We even brought that forward. So I'm letting
Yeah, this kind of gets into, uh, the GeoPermits, uh, application that we've, we've, uh, applied and and all of the efficiencies that we're starting to create for ourselves. So I, in the future, actually Sean brought up that we should probably look ahead to the future. So if this is going to be a hiring freeze conversation, should we do it in the next fiscal year? And starts to make plans for that respect to be able to give everybody a chance to plan for it. So just want to put it out there into everybody's heads and start thinking about making our government smaller.
So you're saying because we decided to go with a different system as far as what sets uses that we should now have hiring freeze. I mean, I guess I'm a little confused. That's going to give us data. A system will give us some good dash and it's going to give our homeowners some good data as far as where their taxes are going. However, that doesn't really take away anybody's position or make anybody's position more efficient.
So I'm referring to actually the GeoPermits where you can start doing your applications online, which was rather as much face to face time. That's interaction with, which is, you know, good. People want to stop in and that's great. We've got the personnel supported. Um, we've got a lot of great employees that can, uh, answer the questions, but on the other side of it, we can get into a lot more efficiencies if we start looking towards the future.
What department would that apply to all department, those permits, the departments to those, who goes apply to mainly a sector zoning road? I don't know.
Everyone. I mean, even the, uh, the, uh,
I don't issue permits.
Even the county attorney's office could use GeoPermits to, uh, as an example, do deferred adjudication for speeding tickets and that effect. There's, there's a lot of efficiencies that we can put into place. Um, and this GeoPermits process actually moves us into the digital world rather than paper, paper processes.
Yeah, that statement I wanted to read. And I've got another one since county attorney is going to read. Um, Mr. Wheeling has proposed a hiring freeze accepting the sheriff's department's secondary roads. Uh, I would appreciate him articulating what his goal is on this proposal, which he's pretty much stated he's trying to increase efficiencies. Facts are, uh, the board supervisors does not have the authority to control the actions of other elected officials in the operations of their departments. Any freeze on fulfilling open positions within the control of elected officials is their responsibility. They have a duty and commitment to the citizens of Buchanan County to properly staff their departments within their budgets and provide services. Any agrees would be on a strictly voluntary basis for each elected official. Positions pay and staffing are discussed annually at budget time, not in the middle of the fiscal year. The departments of the county serve the citizens of Buchanan County. That's the staffing would have a serious effect on service levels. Some departments are governed by commissions such as county conservation, emergency management, public health and environmental health. The board of supervisors has no authority other than budget approved.
We also have the, the authority over the power of the.
I can, dang.
Sorry. What did you say?
No, I'm not finished.
Okay.
So.
Are you, are you okay? Do you need to have a minute?
I love you.
I love. In response to Mr. Wheeling saying that Geo permitting is going to increase efficiencies, what we have seen so far is the setup alone is extremely challenging. It's taking a lot of time. Uh, we are not actually functioning with it at this point. And it's going to take a long time just to get the secondary roads and planning and zoning using it, let alone, uh, environmental health. So there's a, a plot that goes into this. You're not ma, waving a magic wand and all of a sudden we have all these efficiencies. There's, they're having to do a lot more on this than what you are alluding to. And now you can make your comment.
Uh, again, we at the board of supervisors have the power of the first. But if we start to see overrun office, I mean, the treasurer's office is constantly busy. We constantly see a line there. They're, they're actively constantly supporting individuals. Um, other, other areas, you know, we can do some cutbacks. And you're right, we don't do that now. We don't do that overnight. We do that at.
Whenever, yes, are you seeing that?
I see, I see about four or five positions that may be cut back.
Elaborate. Just don't, no, and don't generalize. Elaborate.
I think, uh, this whole.
Elaborate. Tell us what you're looking at.
Are you okay?
Not really. Nice.
Not at all.
I mean, going to recess and have a few minutes.
No, not it. I think we're okay.
Okay.
So elaborate.
All right, cool. So the, uh, the topic of Iowa donation has, uh, has hit a pause. Um, so what the state of Iowa government has done is reduced their workforce by a bit, quite significantly. And they've done that success. They've done it successfully. And so that's, that's probably something we need to look at at the county level as well.
Are you? I'm, I'm. Well, I, I'm just going to say, and, and you're right, the state has really cut back, which has put a lot more burden, burden on the county and our departments, um, flipping the bill for these things and that's stressful on public health, on the sheriff's office, on everybody that trickles down to, um, where stuff rolls downhill. And especially the unknown of where that funding is going to come from these. It's you're right. They have dozed it and, but the counties are getting a lot more, um, responsibilities.
So we would need time to take a look at all the changes and see how they affect and trickle down.
Yeah, because trying to get the answers from the state right now, I don't, that, they don't know what's going on. You know, it's really frustrating to, you know, like our laser on program and things like that, but we don't know if the funding is going to be there next month or next year or what it's going to be. You know, so th- those are the things that I'm concerned about as far as, um, limiting staffing and stuff, especially when things are getting busier and busier for the companies.
I'm going to call on Chris Hare and Griffin Vicki, Chris with our emergency management and nine one one. And Griffin is our public health director. But they can elaborate a little bit on what the state has done, pulling all disaster funding from the county and going only state level.
Yep. And they told all IA doing times of disaster when we usually have our advocacy here in the county. That's not one.
You want to, please don't speak in afternoons or, or on this.
Which acronym did I use today?
I think IA.
IA, individual assistance. Like if you get flooded, you get hit by tornadoes. We usually have like an order of disaster recovery coalition, stuff like that. Come in and help you do the case works and stuff like that. That's gone. So Scott County is going through it right now and the state sent one person for three hundred and eighty hours. And then they're not going to probably get the funding anyway. Cause they're not going to hit the laws. So it's in theory, yeah, it's a good thing, but they're, what is, it's going to affect all our citizens because we can't provide you the services that you expect. So we're seeing a lot of funding cutbacks already. On that, on the grants, yeah, on the federal side, yes.
Yes.
Griffin, uh, anything to offer there?
Yeah, I just, um, the public health, sorry.
Yeah.
Uh, the public health part, we have four staff. Um, so I just rolled up a little something. I was just going to read it. So I hit all my points, but, um, our department operates under contracts and I would probably probably services. These contracts require that specific positions be in place to carry out the work outlined into grants. If a staff member in one of these positions were to leave and were not being replaced, then we would be in breach of those contracts. So that would, could require us to return funding to the state. Um, and it's important that we remain in good standing with the state because if we're not, they may choose to, um, allocate those funds elsewhere. Um, I brought some budgeting information, but that's just what we're operating on. I mean, we're as a staff of four. It's, it's not enough, but that's what we've been made, making do with and yeah.
You bring, bring up a great point about, um, uh, statutory requirements, victim advocates and things like that. Obviously those, we, we don't have a choice. We, we absolutely have to fill those roles. Just, just like you were still in your grants.
John Harden, our county attorney, wanted to be here, but was had other commitments he had this morning, but he sent an email yesterday uh, that he would like me to read. I see there is an agenda item for Monday morning to discuss a hiring freeze except for secondary roads in the sheriff's office. I will not be able to attend the meeting on Monday, but I wanted to provide some information on the subject as no one has reached out to discuss the legal and or practical implications of this. Please feel free to share this information at the meeting should you see fit. First, perhaps this is already part of the consideration, but nonetheless, I wanted to be sure everyone is aware. There is case law as well as Iowa, as formal Iowa attorney general opinions on the topic of limits to action taken by the board supervisors after a budget has been approved, submitted and implemented. Hiring freeze ties directly into budget considerations and thus must be made afterward before the time budgets are approved. Therefore, any contemplation of a hiring freeze at this time can only be implemented for the fiscal year twenty seven budget year, which would be July twenty sixth to June twenty seventh. Second, I suggest that before the board of supervisors take any action on this topic, they take an opportunity to discuss the same with each department head and elected official. Each department and or elected official may have positions that are required by state law. For example, I am in the process of hiring a replacement victim witness coordinator. If the board of supervisors decides to implement a hiring freeze for fiscal year twenty seven, and I find myself in a similar situation, but cannot hire a replacement, there could be a wide ranging consequences for Buchanan County. For example, Buchanan County would be in jeopardy of losing all state funding. I do not know all the portments this could affect, but I know two big ones would be public health and secondary roads. The state could terminate all existing grants with public health and require Buchanan County to refund any proceeds previously received under those grants, even funds received in prior years if they are multi-year grants. The same would apply to any funds received from the state for use by secondary roads and so forth. Third, different departments and elected officials have different ethical and legal considerations when it comes to what services will be cut as the result of a hiring freeze or other budget constraints. I am only knowledgeable on this topic with regards to my office. So again, I think the board of supervisors should discuss this with all department heads and elected officials. By way of example, the Iowa County Attorneys Association, which falls under the umbrella of the Iowa State Association of Counties, has established prosecutor, prosecural standards. Those standards indicate that the primary responsibility of county attorneys is in relation to criminal representation. All civil representation is secondary. Thus, any kind of hiring or budget constraint will first result in the county and selected officials losing representation by the county's county attorney's office. Under such a scenario, the county and selected officials would need to hire outside legal counsel for funding for the same coming from elsewhere in the general fund. By no means is this meant to be an exhaustive list, but rather merely a starting point to illustrate some of the consideration that should be contemplated prior to taking sweeping county-wide action. Every department and or elected official's office may have an entirely different set of considerations that should be known and contemplated before any action is taken. Thank you, Sean. Any other, uh, comments or questions?
I'd also like to add something. Um, I wrote something up and referred to, um, as the HR, I really don't believe a countywide hiring freeze is the right decision right now or for, for fiscal year twenty seven. Each department operates very differently and has unique needs. A blanket hiring freeze doesn't reflect that reality and could cause problems in places where hiring is actually necessary to keep things running smoothly. Hiring is not something that we do lightly. A lot goes on behind the scenes before a position gets filled. Every employee and position exists for a reason. And when a role stays vacant for too long, it puts more pressure on the rest of the team and impacts the services we provide to the public. I don't think that the board should be making a blanket decision that affects every department the same way. Staffing decisions need to be flexible and made by the people who actually understand the specific needs of their departments. Overall, we have a solid workforce and it's important to keep it that way to serve our community well.
Thank you, Ash.
Very well said, Ash.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have just one quick question. Um, supervisor Kurt said, ask you to define the, um, inefficiencies in departments that you've seen. What departments are those? I mean, what are you looking at? I guess it's my question.
Yeah, I think that's a good point. I think we should reach out to ISAC and, and.
No, you said you've seen the inefficiencies, like you've already seen departments that are not working efficiently. I'm asking if there's specific departments that you were referencing.
In general, I, I believe that there's, there's a way to identify what, how to make our employees more marketable. If, if they're to learn, uh, not, not eliminate the checks and balances or anything of the sort, but be able to learn other departments as well to be able to cover down for those other departments when their department is not busy.
I would like to make.
I think, um, maybe if this is something that you would like to proceed with, I would highly suggest reaching out to each department head.
True.
And going through the specific duties and the daily task. and going through the specific duties and the daily tasks. Because I know when you brought this up earlier, um I had stated that, you know, each department we have here in the county, they're running at bare bones right now. They're barely keeping their heads above the water. I know you spoke of the treasurer's office, absolutely, because they deal with the majority of the public. I see secondary roads. Absolutely could they use more people? We don't have it in the budget because we don't want to put that taxation on our residents. Same thing with the sheriff's office. But you can't throw this blanket freeze out without knowing what these departments do on a daily basis.
Yeah, this this is the part of the discussion. Thank you for bringing this point.
We do need to keep in mind that every year we in every small government gets this from their auditors that uh we need more of a separation of duties. So trying to job share a person doesn't work because they you need the checks and balances and you need that separation of duties.
In some respects, yes.
Why don't you contact Martin Gardner?
That's great.
Any other questions or comments on it? Bonnie?
I'm just curious if if there if there actually was a job freeze put on and um somebody retired, somebody decided to move, whatever, who would take on the responsibility of that? Would it be split? Would it go to one person? And what if those people get so overloaded or somebody there decides to quit? Now we've got we've got this domino effect. And where does it end where a a a department simply cannot do their job? Because there aren't enough people, there's not enough time in a day.
So that domino effect. Thank you, Bonnie.
Want to start you? There was an exhaustive um budget process gone through. My question is you had each individual department head here a one-on-one. At that time, wouldn't that have been an appropriate time to discuss whether they had an extra person that they didn't feel they needed within the budgeting process? I mean, wasn't that the right time to ask the questions of maybe can you cut some? Is there a proposition here where you could cut?
I don't agree because I just walked into the organization, so it would take a few months to be able to observe them. And then the next year around, that's that's the time to I agree, the next year is the time to do it.
I do want to ask a question. How many hours have you spent here observing people?
I guess I was gonna say he's never asked us in in Penasilla, you've become such an expert if you just walked into an institution here. I spent thirty seven years working for the state and this D O G D O G E system does not work. Uh, I, when you let people go, they retire or whatever, and you do not replace them, you just continue to work with the existing staff. I'm one person. I cannot do the job of five people. And by the time I retired, I was so overworked. It was ridiculous. It just it doesn't work that way, Key. You cannot, go ahead, go ahead, interrupt. You're really good at that. And that business about, do you need to take a time out? Do you need to get? That is so condescending. You should be ashamed of yourself. You are the rudest individual I have ever encountered in a public position. You should absolutely be ashamed of yourself. You're ridiculous.
Which organization were you overworked?
B H S.
B H S, yes, thank you.
Buchanan County, thirty seven years. And if I ever talked to another coworker or a public person or a client of mine in the manner you just talked to him, I wouldn't have a job for the very seven years. You're ridiculous.
Any other comments?
There's one.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
We just talked about the state making all these cutbacks, which means now the county has to pick up the slack, doesn't it? Yeah, now your idea is have the county start cutting back too. But briefly, you may have to put more people on to pick up the slack that the state has dumped on you. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
This doesn't go away. It's still there. There's gotta be a body to do the job.
All right, if there's no more comments on there.
I got one.
Okay.
If there's not a problem, why are we gonna make a problem? I create one when there's not one.
Another lighter weight subjects. Could we uh have Daniel, you wanna come up here and we'll talk about EMS ballot levy? We want to. Thank you. All right.
I guess I can opened up this can of worms.
Yeah.
Um, last week's meeting, I asked for the board's approval to have a outside attorney review this language. So come to find out in kind of the fine print of the code, in the ballot language, not only do we have to put in the um cents per thousand that we are requesting, there needs to be a dollar amount per year, like up to blah, blah, blah. Um, so that's why we're back. So we need to make that decision. I understand it probably will not be made today. It needs to be reviewed. I did get a sample resolutions from Butler County that hasn't placed their levy. And they did do a dollar amount. Guthrie Counties did not pass last year. They did not have a dollar amount. Uh, Henry County, theirs passed in September of twenty twenty four. They did have a dollar amount. And Benton County, I think it was two years ago, oh, twenty-three, theirs passed, and they did not have a dollar amount. So ninety-nine counties, ninety-nine different things, but I truly think if this is something that the attorney is recommending we do, we come up with a dollar amount. So I do have these samples, but I will email them to all of you. And the decision regarding that, that's I mean, yes.
I guess I'm not clear. So the dollar amount, were those counties also using the income tax or charge or were they? So how did they cut? What kind of a dollar amount are you talking?
Oh, Butler County in the amount of a hundred and fifty thousand annually and but they only went for fourteen cents per thousand. And um not to exceed. So they started with a minimum and then stating on their ballot language that they could go up to seventy-five cents. Um, the other one that had it was Henry County. And keep in mind, Henry Counties, their valuations are really much lower than Buchanan. But they put on theirs not to exceed one point one million for a period of fifteen years. And property tax at the maximum rate of point seven five cents per thousand of assessed value on taxable property, which I know that's confusing to the public, but it's truly taxable property. It's not assessed.
Excellent valuation. And that was the comment I sent you on.
Yes, yeah.
Is that gets to be real sticky.
It gets to be confusing for the public. So basically, out of the four samples, I got two of them had the dollar amounts in there.
Daniel wanted to say something. So uh the chapter four twenty-two D where the the code sections comes from. It just states uh subsection two C that you need an amount of funding to be specified on the ballot. It doesn't specify like a dollar amount, just an amount of funding. So of the there's twenty-eight counties out of the ninety-nine that had put this out for vote. Of those twenty-eight, twenty-one of them have passed it. Of the twenty-one that have passed it, only four of them have a dollar amount listed. You have to, yeah, so Butler County had it, Henry County has it, Luisa County has it. Uh, there are six total of the twenty-eight, but only four had passed um and Winnebago County. They, two of them have a exact dollar figure. The other ones just say to not exceed a certain dollar figure. Um, but again, of the twenty-one that have passed it, only four have listed an actual dollar amount. Um, I couldn't find anywhere where it says you need a specific dollar amount, just an amount of funding. But again, I'm not an attorney, so there's attorneys recommending it. I'm not going to argue with the lawyers on it, but um from an advisory council standpoint, it it doesn't, my the only concern from the advisory council would be, does this limit us going forward? Does this limit us in the fifteen years of this levy? Um, that if we have seventy-five cents and we can show the need for seventy-five cents, but then it caps at a certain dollar figure that we're now limited. I don't, I I don't, I can't say what the next fifteen years would bring if this were to pass in November. Um, but that's what I found from my my research.
Um, I think what you're gonna find is valuations are gonna continue to go up. They're not gonna go down, which why I'm really would like to put a dollar figure on there. I mean, we could
Going off what the attorney said.
We can go by what our valuations are right now and come up with a figure. But it won't be right five to four years.
You could always go above and beyond that figure, taking into consideration because it's up two, but you're still only gonna have your sense of mileage or taxi. Understand what I'm saying? So, okay, so you you could
Sure.
Just because you put it on the ballot language, you're going to have two point five million annually, but you're only letting that a rate of, I'm gonna say, fifty-four cents per thousand. You're never gonna hit that dollar amount with that fifty-four cents. The dollar amount is basically kind of like gonna be very confusing to the public, but it's put puts a limit at the amount in case in fifteen years our fifty-four cents per thousand does generate the two point one million.
So that's for that's for an example, you you listed approximately seven hundred and forty thousand dollars for to be proceeds from this.
In total, and the entire county is just over million.
So just uh, yeah, okay. So then if we were to set the limit of two million dollars, then in fifteen years, we're not gonna exceed that two million dollars, if this is to your point.
That's exactly what I was saying, yes.
But you're saying seven dollar amount higher than what it actually is.
One hundred percent.
Future growth inflation.
Because then you always have on the ballot language, you guys did decide to go up to. So if you start at seventy-five and everything's running smooth and we have money we need, you guys can vote to take that down.
Right, that was that was the the whole thing you're using the up to because, you know, the full intent is not to use that seventy-five cents.
One hundred percent, yes.
Full intent is to have this at least partially or more than partially paid for itself.
Yes.
And on that, if if you don't go to seventy-five cents, and let's say five years from now, you go um it's fifty-five cents this year, does that have to go back on the ballot to bring it down?
So words up to, it does not have to go back on the ballot, but if we use seventy, we're gonna fund it at seventy-five cents per thousand, then we would have to go back on the ballot because you pass a ballot measure. So using the words up to allows us flexibility to take that down because, I mean, an ambulance will never be self-supporting, but if we can make it pay for itself as much as possible over time, then the taxpayers do not have to subsidize it as much. I think you see we're subsidized, but that's what it is.
Yeah.
I don't think there's this this is gonna sound crazy, but I don't think there's a wrong answer here. If you put a dollar amount on there, as long as it's not a limiting dollar amount, it doesn't, it's not gonna affect anything. You don't put a dollar amount on there, I can't imagine that what seventeen counties have done this wrong and they're all gonna get screwed over from not having a dollar amount. So I don't think that's the wrong answer. Um, my just my concern to you guys is to not not make it so it doesn't limit the sustainability of the ambulance and of the EMS in the entire county. That's that's our biggest thing. So if there's a dollar amount, just make it hopefully that not something that's gonna come back bite us in the ass in five, ten years.
Yeah, and if the board chooses not to put a dollar amount on it, I mean, that is completely up to you. It will be documented very well what we did because it's not coming back on my shoulder.
Right, I understand that.
If we had a growth rate at uh three percent over ten years, that seven hundred and forty thousand would would get to about nine hundred and ninety-four thousand, seven point nine hundred and ninety-five thousand over ten years, that's three percent growth.
It's actually more than ten, I think thousands.
Like one, one million twelve thousand something.
And so if you do the dollar now, then you have to also do the dollar now in the twenty year unit with the other two pounds, the other two towns.
Yes, yes. What would be why I total is one million, two thousand, two hundred. Uh, one million, two thousand, two hundred and eighty-one. That's the estimate based on the the taxable valuations for this fiscal year.
I did have a Zoom meeting with the attorney and his assistant. If you guys would like to have one with him also, I can reach out and see if we can do that sometime Monday. I'm gone, I'm supposed to be on vacation Wednesday through Friday, but possibly set something up for Monday during the board of supervisors meeting. Um, he's not, he's I could tell you any different than what he told me. And I get what Dan said, that there was only these few counties that did it. I almost wonder if a lot of it, like I said, kind of the fine print did not get seen.
Well, and somebody could be, he could be, he could be misinterpreting a word differently than what another attorney is interpreting the word. I mean, it's all interpret interpretation of
Three percent over ten years, that's about one point three seven million. Give you a ballpark.
Hearing some of the comments last year, there were kind of malls and stuff like that. That might be a good thing to for the farmers to hear an amount.
That you're at, that the board is actually limiting a dollar and not being Yeah, you'd see it both ways. I see a huge number and be scared. Yes. Yep, I agree.
And we need to be as as transparent with with our voting population as we can be transparent. I mean, I don't want to try to do, I don't want anybody to say you tried to deceive me in any stretch of the imagination.
I get a motion that we uh have uh um council uh speak with us next Monday on a Zoom call.
I do not need another meeting.
No, during it'll be during, it'll be during our
I'll make the motion.
I'll have to see if they were available. But yeah, I will email them and ask.
Right, and then next Monday is really stacking up for me too. And then then after that, we have ISAC going on.
Do the following.
People, I've been through three weeks in a row, the the one.
Frame that you have to have the actual writing down to make sure it gets printed on the notes.
I think it's, I believe it's September fifteenth. So go, my chance to live.
Well, and I mean, I don't envision achieving their their thing though. I guess I feel like we have, we are having information. I mean, our honor has taught spoken.
They've got to change their language because it says assessable value and it needs to be taxable.
No, it says assessed value on taxable value. So it goes off the cess value, which the cess value gives you the taxable value.
But don't you
Taxes are so
If it's gonna be worded like that on a ballot, then it can
All these other ones.
Taxable.
Okay, Butler County said assessed value on taxable property. Uh, Guthrie County said assessed value on taxable property. Um Henry County said the same. And that county said the same.
Right.
So all four samples that I got had it worded that way. And I truly understand the confusion to the public because that's the first thing they think it's it's on my cess value and your cess value and your taxable is two totally different.
Right, so that's kind of that does kind of clarify the cess by on the taxable. Mm-hmm, it does bring up
At best, because the only word you see is assessed. You don't see the rest of it.
Can you do like bolds and underlines on the ballot or is that not not?
Well, if you're gonna be talking to the attorney, you know, maybe throw that out. Do we just, do we take out that assess value and just put taxable in there to help clarify it a little bit more? I mean, it wouldn't hurt to ask it since we're gonna be
I would like to have here the question at least to ask considering this. Ralph, you have questions?
Yeah, in in regards to if you do have to put the dollar value on that, at that time, you also have to, do you have to put up to how many years? And if you put a dollar value on that, say, you know, within the next ten years, fifteen years, or whatever be the case, are you able to go back in, readjust it, or is that locked in for that timeframe?
The dollar amount would be locked in for that timeframe unless the board chooses to put it on uh for out for another public measure.
So it would have to be a public measure. So it would have to be a public measure.
To change the dollar. Correct.
So if you went with like fifteen years figuring the average three percent place a year. And, you know, your property values go up and everything. Would, if you go fifteen years out to compound interest and everything, would you be looking at? Possibly taking your one million estimated right now. And it makes that a two million dollar cap, you almost doubling it, if you're gonna look fifteen years down the road. Through compound interest at three percent a year, I mean, it could possibly be at two million dollars.
Yes.
You know, I, I would just, just question.
Yeah, and that's the consideration the board has to take, because this, if it passes, will be fifteen years out. And absolutely, our values from now, fifteen years from now are gonna be completely different. So that's what they have to take into consideration unless we reach that dollar and mark. And the board wants to collect more funds for the EMS, then it would have to go back out for a public measure.
We could always money the bottom floor and say what happens about the, I mean, if they decide to keep something with. Property tax in the next legislative session.
I don't know what's the matter with that too.
How do we, how do we make it concrete as an example? Uh, on a hundred, you know, for a hundred thousand dollars, okay? What's that gonna cost? Man, I think that's.
Yep, yeah, they would, yeah, absolutely. Take your taxable value, say your taxable value is a hundred thousand, divide that by a thousand, take it times. If the board chooses to go seventy-five cents, that's gonna be your property tax increase for the year.
So it's based on seventy-five dollars.
The, there's flyers that we have, I don't have any with me right now, but it lists out like a hundred thousand dollar house, two hundred thousand dollar house that. Add average property value, property or taxable valuations. Sorry.
Taxable word.
Is like two hundred and forty-eight thousand, I think, in the county, and then it goes up from there. I, I have like five or six of them listed. And it lists out what your property taxes would be for each of those.
That's what they can understand you.
Yep, we've got, we've got a bunch of flyers, um. There's some that are just general for the county, then there's some that are specific for, like, if you live in Raleigh, here's how this is going to affect you as a resident of Raleigh. Uh, or around Raleigh. So yeah, we're trying to get those out, it's just, uh. We're, we're hitting, we're hitting the city councils and, um. We have, all the city councils will be in the following weeks. We have the Independence, um, city council meeting tonight. So if you guys want flyers, I can certainly get some. And, uh, look for them, because they'll be, they'll be getting around.
Any more discussion on ballot language?
So what's the plan?
I would, uh, ask that you contact them and see if they'll do a Zoom meeting for it.
I made the motion earlier.
Had it during.
Okay, yep, you had made that motion. I did not hear a second, if there was a second.
My favor? Okay, public comments. Please be. Brief and rambling yourself, get three minutes.
I would like to start. The public comment, um. Due to some things that were said at the last meeting and some stuff that has come about and around.
Sure.
Um, in response to the continued allegations against the B Well Committee, of which I am a member. The committee was formed in two thousand nine in response to the county's insurance carriers to assist with keeping the cost of workman's compensation and health insurance down. The carriers requested that money be placed in an employee health and wellness benefit fund. To be spent on employee, employee wellness incentives. The discounts far exceed the small amount of funding for this. The funds are used for morale boosting activities, along with wellness challenges to keep employees physically and mentally healthy. The benefit to the county is that less money is spent on health claims, maintenance and preventive prescriptions in addition to savings. Provided by the county's insurance carriers. The fund also pays for the employee assistant program, the EAP, as a mental health benefit. A few of the programs to keep employees engaged are as follows. The Maintain Don't Gain Challenge in January with a small prize for the winner. Wednesday's Walks, mornings and afternoons at break times during the summer months. The Park Challenge in early summer, this encourages employees and families on personal time to visit a minimum of five county parks. Our Apple and Popcorn Handout in the September, October timeframe. Ten-minute massages during the Christmas season to combat the stress of the holiday period. This was last hosted in December of twenty twenty-four with a claim amount of three hundred and sixty-four dollars. And the newly created Door Decorating Contest with outside non-bias judges, the doors. Are decorated for Christmas, Independence Day and Halloween, although our sheriff has not decided to participate. Well, not only does this give the courthouse and the county locations a festive feel, but it also promotes camaraderie and, um, boost morale. In addition to all the above. Employees may request a small reimbursement for gym membership. The committee manages to do all of this at less than eight thousand dollars a year. The county's auditing firm, Gardner Company, reviews the books for wrongful expenditures and the wellness program spending, including the massages. Has previously passed the auditing firm scrutiny. In further response to Mr. Whelan's continued allegations of misappropriation regarding massages and wondering about taxable fringe benefits. Regarding the wellness program. IRS Publication fifteen B lists this type of benefit as a de minimis or minimal benefit, and it is not taxable. It is tax exempt, along with the small, healthy oriented prizes that are given to the winners of the challenges. Additionally, Mr. Whelan. Instead of trying to make a name for himself or to find a gotcha moment. He would have saved the taxpayers hours of continued airtime and behind the scenes emails. Everything was done with the intent of continuing to save on health and workers' compensation insurance premiums. Mr. Whelan was informed of this continually throughout the year dating back to January by certain other members. With this being said, I demand that Mr. Whelan lay this matter to rest and not bring it up again. As it is a legitimate expense and all the questions have been answered.
Thank you. Yes.
Why would you question that? What, what, why did you question that?
Why would I question it?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a surprising thing to see a massage table set up in the, uh.
Did you just ask and then go on, or did you make a big deal out of it?
No, I waited for the receipt to show up and then I asked.
I mean, where can you find time to do your job?
As I described, that's the maker of my job.
That is your job?
To supervise.
To follow people around and see what they're doing and. Or men, or, I mean, are you like an investigator? What is your job?
Who are you suggesting I follow?
Well, this, I'm a massage table. I'm gonna check it out and see where it's coming from and. What is your job? Can you write me up a job description like we used to have to do it, uh, with the state?
It, it's already done.
So, give me an example.
Give you an example?
Of what your job description is.
Okay, I think your, your questions last week were.
I withdraw, never mind, I don't wanna hear from you. Forget it. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to, I'm sorry. I just don't.
I'm Danny Kurtz in Bend, Iowa. Um, Keith. I want some clarification on your diatribe that you presented to gin up your following last week. I painfully listened to your speech several times and found following questions and inaccuracies. Dawn's Real Estate, where was her conflict of interest? Uh, most people can't live solely on a supervisor's salary. Do you have another job?
Were you asking me if I have another job?
You're not gonna answer me anyway, so, whatever. Um, where was John's conflict of interest? He stood nothing to gain by that as he had been retired from advanced auto parts for several years. Um, both of these people have saved the county money. Simply because they had knowledge of what these other things could entail. Um. Since you had voted against hiring outside legal representation. Are you going to reimburse the county for the legal fees that the county's incurred due to your filing complaints?
I did not vote against it.
And whatever. I don't, yeah, you abstained, that. You certainly didn't agree to it. Um, dozens of whistleblower. Um, complaint, retaliation complaints. Why have none of these complaints been directed to the county attorney or to HR? Why have they only come to you, or is this another fantasy of yours?
They have, they have been directed.
Then. Why doesn't anyone else know of these?
I would say other people do actually know about them. But it's not our.
It's all a big conspiracy.
Okay, well, we're not supposed to give you personnel updates when it has to do with personnel.
I didn't ask you to.
Okay.
Dry up. I finally, I find it exceedingly funny that your statement at the train station comment doesn't hold water in this. A downright lie. I contacted both IPD and the sheriff's office and neither had a call of service. For your name. Why did you lie? At one point, you wanted the sheriff's office to take over the Independence Police Department. Why? One is city and the other county. Do you not understand that?
How did you get that information? That's privileged information.
No, it's not. I did a public records request, just like you do. And I had it within twenty-four hours. Uh, here's one that I find incredibly interesting. This is a email sent on February twenty eighth.
Now, you have to patch it up, you got over three minutes.
This one's really important.
I'm giving you a couple.
I'll, I'll let her go for it, okay.
All right, I received a, a complaint, you said hand claim, it should have been a claim. Of several potential violations by Independence Police Personnel. Please put this discussion on Monday's agenda. I assume it'll need to be in closed session. I assume this is an ongoing investigation subject to those limitations. If so, can we discuss with organizations? Is our investigating these complaints? Sean's reply was, we have no control over City of Independence. Officers or officials, the complaint needs to be filed with City of Independence. For the City of Independence to handle. Your reply was, this was just stellar on your part, Keith. The complaints have already been filed with the FBI. Who do you think you are?
My name's Keith Whelan.
Yeah, like I, oh, we all know that. Um, I certainly hope you reflect them in words, in your actions. I used to turn coworkers roostling, and she do not treat them as coworkers.
Okay.
What are you willing to? Will you quit asking MFPs, okay?
That's almost good to know, and thank you for that. Repetitive. Okay, thank you.
Oh, yes, I'd like to. I'd like to be the, the optimist and, and make you a little forward thinking. Um, I think it's necessary in any. Job to have some incentive. And I think being able to, um, go for a walk on your, your break and being a part of. Maybe a bigger, bigger, um. View than just your four walls during, during work hours is, is awesome. And I think. The three of you as board supervisors should be encouraging that type of behavior of health and well-being. In a workplace. Um, the simple, simple things, uh, the massage chair for three hundred and sixty-four dollars, you guys got a deal on that. Um, being able to come in here and see the doors, um, decorated. Have something else that the public can discuss with the employee that they're talking to about the door and. And, and the common artery that stuff, the different. Things like that. Generate. That's health for, you know, how, not just health for your employees.
For sure.
I think that eight thousand dollars. Throughout the year. That you, you are employee, employers as well. They are employees, it's not just government. They are human and you, we need to. Encourage them to be the best they can be so they can perform better than what. They think they're capable of. Encouragement is, is key.
Thank you.
Most successful organizations feel like a family. Not like somebody that'll do it. So the more you feel like a family, the better it is for everybody that they have.
Anyone else?
Got, so, all of these complaints, because you, you thought that they would if they were genuinely complaints. Um, and the massages too, that hit me too, because you said people are people. And they need to be appreciated. Um, and my understanding was that when the vote came up to approve the payment of it, that you actually voted yes for that. Which you should have. Uh, but then you should complain about it later. Uh, the ride to the train station comment, I do believe is kind of, I actually, because I don't watch a lot. I actually took that at face value and, uh. I, to, if you did call the police, um, I'm wondering if you really are that insecure. Or if you're trying to be bullying to stop people from saying anything, because if every off the cuff comment made on Facebook or other media. Was construed by someone as a credible threat, we'd have to triple our police force. Um, and regarding the hiring of outside legal counsel for the auditor and the two supervisors. All of us who are paying any attention at all are well aware that this was the advice of the county attorney. Who cannot represent them due to the fact that the complaint was brought by another supervisor. It's standard operating procedure to have an attorney at these complaint inquiries. If you have a problem with that, you should bring it up with the county attorney. And in case you wanted people to think that they should cover the costs themselves, I'm sure you know that Iowa Code three, three, one, seven, five, nine. States the cost of representing a county officer acting in the official, officer's official capacity. Shall be paid from the pork expense fund or the general fund of the county. That's Iowa code. And it was really when you, when you, um, had that speech all prepared, it was really painfully obvious that you're. Um, you fill the audience with your supporters so that they, you have a base to listen to the prepared recitation of complaints and allegations. Searching for something to complain about is beginning to appear compulsive. It's childish, it's game playing, and it's given. Duquesne County needs you to grow up. You have knowledge to offer. Offer it as a team member and not as someone who is after everyone in sight. You won't make this a better county that way. Unless making this a better county isn't actually the goal, and I guess time will tell.
Thank you.
Anyone else? We're about, uh, forty-five minutes late to our meeting that we're gonna have, ten, so. I got one job.
There's. If you have just one more second.
These last week, you set this booklet behind you. We've been asking you to go to train, to be a better team member, have we not?
Yes.
Yeah. So you alluded that this packet, this book that you went to was gonna help you team. Progression, correct?
I think the question was whether or not I had attended training that would help.
In regards to team. So this booklet.
It's asking the question.
It was to be a supervisor.
It's put out by Iowa State University. It's called Farmland Leasing Ranges, twenty twenty-five. Exists inside Improving Your Farm Lease Contract Survey of Iowa Leasing Practices, Cash Corn and Soybean Prices. Iowa Corn and Soybean County Yields, et cetera. This has absolutely nothing to do with the three of you gelling and team training. But you made it sound like you attended this to help our county to understand how to work together. That's bull.
Thank you for your.
If you're gonna say something, make sense and do it right. Thank you.
It's truthful, it's important.
Daniel?
Just a, just a quick, quick thought, so. You three are in positions of authority, you're. you three are in positions of authority. You're in, you're, you're supervisors. You're in charge of people. You're in charge of finances. If any employees under you as a board acted the way you three are, have been acting, they would be in Ashley's office and out the door. I, to me, it, the unprofessional comments, the backstabbing, it's childish. And it's not, it's, you're down here as a child. You're not even acting as adults. You need to act as professionals. You need to act as standards for the county. You need to set the tone for how your employees should be, uh, conducting themselves. And from an EMS standpoint, when we're trying to look at having a county-run ambulance service, we have to hire employees. If I'm looking for a place to work, this is the last place I'm gonna look to, because I see the mess that's happening at the top. And if that's what's happening at the top, what mess is happening down below? I, I, I think you are all three better than this. I think this county is better than this, and I am exhausted, absolutely exhausted of coming to these meetings, watching meetings, hearing everything going on, reading emails, doing whatever of, of the drama of the childishness. I just want to be able to read an email or talk to someone and know that the county is moving in the right direction and not have it be a two-week-long bickering session over, you know, dumb stuff, just excuse my French, but just dumb stuff. It just, dear God, please act like professionals and adults so this county can continue to progress. All I have to say.
Great comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. I appreciate your. And your spot on. You are absolutely spot on.
Hey. If there's no one else, I will ask for a motion to adjourn so we can move forward to the.
We need to stay in session because all.
Okay.
We have to, we have to have a break from session. I'm sorry. Some of us have small.
You're going to the meeting. I'm just asking that you do not adjourn until you're done meeting with this contractor. Then we can come back and adjourn because it is an agenda item.
I was great. Recess it and for five minutes for.
Five minutes recessed and then.
I'll make the motion. Thought.
All in favor?
Thank you.
No, that's not what I asked. Okay, bad one, or.
Thanks, me.
Yeah, good to meet you. Wasn't your brother, right?
Oh, that's fine.
Okay.
You said you said that.
It just send everything from now.
Yeah.
So it's gotta be repaired, just, just. Roll with it and any invoice, anything we send to me.
You got it.
Now, just, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.